That's the motion.
Is it for her to bring the vehicle herself or to make it available?
Make it available for Mr. Pendergast to fix the seal.
So anybody can drive it.
What?
I'm employed with a valid license.
Right, I'm employed with a valid license, okay.
Let's go real quick.
That's the motion.
Welcome by the chair, second by.
Did you have a motion?
Counselor Sully.
Any further discussion?
Hearing Madam Clerk, Roko, please.
Ms. Alves? Yes. Mrs. NATO?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Yes. I don't need discussion by counsel. What other action on review of the potential finance procedures, Mr. Pomley?
Thank you, Mr. President and Honorable Counsel. I'm gonna try to make this as quick as we can here. So I came up with six policies that we need to either address or do something about. And I'm just gonna speak to them as briefly as I can. Policy one, fund balance. What I've done is, again, in my own time, on the weekends, I like to write policies. It's fun. Oh, when my kids are away, I've got nothing to do. Really, I'm all about. Well, I mean, it's nice to know the residents believe that I'm gone. You know, as of December 1st. You know, that's nice to hear. But, you know, it makes me want to work hard on the weekend to write policy for you guys to know that I'm gonna be fine. That was pretty nice. But anyways.
I love you, Jason.
So again, so I wrote a fund balance policy that protects the town with the minimum fund balance. My question is, is this amenable to go to either the Budget Committee or to some other place to vet this for it to become an adopted policy? I can't write the policy without other bodies agreeing to it. Would you guys wanna do this on your own or would you believe it should go through the Budget Committee or some other entity first? I mean, really, the policy is pretty self-explanatory that we need a minimum protection. That's the basic gist of it. There's a lot of language in there. All it really means is, this is what fund balance descriptions are. So the gist is protection. Are we amenable for this to go somewhere? I mean, it's not really an ordinance. This is an internal policy that's voted on by the council after it's been vetted by a board of your choosing. So again, I wrote it. That doesn't mean anything as compared to a review process through the town before it's been, you know, gets voted on. But assume you'd want it to be vetted through somewhere before it comes to you.
Having actually read it, I feel bad for you that you spent your week in doing this.
I like policy.
I know you do.
I do. It's a benchmark for the right and wrong if you have a policy written.
And I am absolutely ready to make a motion to accept it.
Well, the only reason I said what I said is I believe it should go through somewhere before it comes to you.
If I may, counsel, the President, please.
Jason, would you feel okay if it goes to the Budget Committee?
Absolutely. They've already seen it. I don't know what their opinions are on it. But absolutely, if it goes there and they can create better language for you and send it to you, perfect. I just wanted to do this.
Just for a second, look, I'm still a language expert.
Well, really, what I did is, I found everyone that I liked and I picked all the good stuff and created ours from that. So it's kind of a best case of every community locally across the USA and government finance officers website, so. So anyways, second policy, so that would be Budget Committee. Investments. Same idea. There's no written policy for investments. Now, we've never really managed cash until me. So if you've noticed, the budget is zero interest income and $10,000 in bank fees. Well, next year, it's $1,000 in fees, just in case I don't have enough money in the bank to eliminate the fees, and $30,000 of interest income. And that's just moving money from a checking to a savings account, monthly. So a cash management of moving from checking to savings is a $40,000 swing between the prior year before me and my current year of the budget of '16, '17. So in a year and a half period, we're going from spending $10,000 to earning $30,000. If we have an investment policy, now I can invest in investments that are more than a 0.5% rate of return, like our savings account is. Basic gist of this is, we can earn more off our money than we do now if I'm allowed to put it in investment. Now, currently, the charter says, "Finance Director, do as you please." I just don't like that. You know, what if I do as I please and I don't foresee some risk? I just don't like that. I'd rather have a formal policy that gives me a menu of choices to choose from investment-wise. So what I did, same idea. All the best policies from Rhode Island, all the best policies from the GFOA website, and then a few other communities across the country, I picked all the best stuff out and created what this investment policy is. Just so you know, there's probably only 40% of communities in Rhode Island that actually have formal policies. So we would be one of those 40% if we were to adopt these. And really, the gist of these is all standardized language and protect us, so.
Jason, of those communities that you did seek, how many have, like, a better tier of investment board or?
A board? Actually, very few do. Most of them, their investment board is related to pension retirements. Now, ours are all through the state, so it's all managed outside of me with no cost. I don't have that kind of situation. We will get into that discussion with OPEB Investment Trust, which is where I'm going. That's actually one of my other policies here, so.
But my concern is that, you know, if, whether this council created a board or something, if you wanna use it as a sounding board, have professionals come together to assist. If not, we can leave it as is?
Well, again, I would rather have this vetted through the Budget Committee as well. Same purpose as the fund balance policy is, I picked everything I like. This menu might not be your menu. So the community should have a board that vets this before it comes to you to make sure the menu of choices I selected is the menu that this, you know, community agrees with. Really, this is all boilerplate language of some policy. We have none, so we went from none to something. Hopefully, that can be crafted into an actual adopted policy that we follow, so.
I can agree that is. I believe the Budget Committee would be the place to have.
For this one as well, okay.
As well.
It's a motion by the chair. Send us the budget, will you?
Yeah, we have motion.
I think they pretty much all might be this, so let's just wait to the end if that's easier for you. All right, policy three. When I read the charter language for purchasing, it's very, very outdated. Now, we had a special meeting in September when we discussed the threshold for quotes in our town is $100 to $4,999. Based on that meeting, I requested that it go from $1,000 to $4,999. And we've been operating with getting three quotes for every item from $1,000 to $4,999 since that September date. That has not changed any of the language in the charter, which is still $100 to $4,999 for the three quote threshold. Now, if you remember the discussion in September, every time we buy a tire for a car, it's over $100. We need to get three quotes for every tire we buy, for everything we do. It would pretty much create a gridlock for the vehicles or the fleet. So really, my intent to raise that quote threshold from $100 to $1,000 is just to keep operations moving. I believe the discussion I had initially was, some people were thinking I should ask for more, maybe $2,500 is the threshold. It just gives us too much room to buy a $2,000 item that we didn't vet through a quote process. So I think $1,000 is low enough, yet high enough, to make sure that we can still continue to do what we need to.
The question I had is that, you know, you're right. I can understand what you're feeling about $1,300, but the idea is, as time goes on, that $1,000 is gonna be, you know, you know, as everything keeps going up, with inflation and the like, and the cost of goods going up, it's maybe, maybe a mean figure of $1,500 might be better.
The only reason I argue less is, I will get everything that goes through our books. And if you find something that's $14,999 that I can find for $1,199, you just blew $300 because you just didn't look. So for me, I wouldn't mind spending the time to look for that $500 difference. I mean, really, it's, we do it for purchasing anyways. So why, I mean, if we do it now from $1,000 up, why, you know what I mean? It would just, better opportunity to get the best price. I mean, that's really what we're trying to do here.
Absolutely.
Mr. Addy.
You could do it one of two ways, Jason. When I was in the school department, we had guidelines like that. And one was a set dollar amount to go out to get three written quotes on something.
That's what we have.
And then the other was actually going out to bid on it.
Well, no, that's what we have, except the threshold is, anything from $100 and up needs the three quotes. We wanna make it $1,000 and up, because now, you need four, you know, you need a tire and, I don't know, something for a car. They're gonna spend their whole day vetting three quotes instead of fixing the vehicle to get it back on the road. I think there's gonna be some wee way in the minimum dollar to require three quotes. That's what I'm talking about here.
What about master pricing agreement? Do you access those at all?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and we follow the charter, which is $5,000 and up is competitive bid, $10,000 and up for construction, purchase services, whether it go through a direct award or RFQ. But really, I'm focused on the quote piece, because the quote in the charter is $100 and up. It's just, it handcuffs us when we try to do something. That's really what the point of it is. So all I did was show you what the language is and suggest that if we can bump it from the $100 and add a zero to $1,000, that's fine with me. I believe it's fine with, you know, Mr. Pendergast after the discussions we've had about trying to keep him out of gridlock.
Because I'm sure some of the truck lots and stuff are expensive and it's.
Oh, yeah. Well, if it's far over $1,000, we'll still vet the three quotes. So I mean, if it's, you know, like, he needs a transmission, obviously trying to get the best transmission. Okay. I mean, I guess I'm arguing on the wrong side, because if you wanna make it $1,500, it just makes my life easier.
I, you know, like, go to $1,500 and then the threshold to a state, but if you're gonna go out to bid $5, $5 and all.
Well, we still would follow the state law, because the town council prior has voted to follow state law for all of the purchasing thresholds. The only thing that didn't get superseded by that was the quote of $100. That's why I'm only focused on the quote, because everything else, we follow state law. Other than the quote, which is in our charter as a hundred.
So if we go for a quote for $1,500, this is gonna remove, because with consumer prices, you know, everything's just gonna keep going on.
You're right about that.
So how about we just go $1,500?
Again, it's, I guess I'm arguing against me to keep it $1,000, so.
Be prudent, though. I appreciate that. I'd feel better at $1,500 just to remove some of this.
It's okay with me.
It all has to get checked by you or?
Anyways, exactly. So I'll put the $1,500, and then this would be one of the ones we consider going to the Budget Committee. Policy four is just, again, standardized language. We charge different fees in our charter and ordinances for bank charges. Some are $25, some are this, some are that. The bank charges is $45. I believe we should charge whatever it charges us. If we switch banks and that bank charges $35, the ordinance shouldn't be tied to a dollar. It should be tied to a pass-through of the charge. So instead of saying it's $35 for the bank fee, if the bank fee's $45, we charging what our bank fee is. That's what the language should be. So no matter what bank we're at, no matter what fee we pay, it's 100% recouped from the taxpayer. Currently, if we're to follow our charter and somebody that bounces a check, we lose $20, well, I'm actually making them pay the extra 20. I'm not really following the charter here, because then we'd stiff ourselves out of 20 bucks.
You may be paying tax on printing.
Well, I can't waive the tax on the purchase. Next time, I'll give you the tax exempt now.
Can you explain?
Yeah.
Well, it's hope there's no.
So anyways, this is just, again, clean up the language.
All right. So.
No real stuff other than make the language, you know, we will charge you what the fee we charge are, basically.
So you haven't listed as only this language for finances, but for fees, right? Help me with that.
Well, it's in two places. I mean, it's in, it's in the ordinance, Section 2183. It's in Section 621. And there was one other place that I can't remember where it is, but it was somewhere in relation to the municipal court. So again, I just figure we charge what our fee is. We don't charge what the ordinance says. If the fee's 50, I don't care that the ordinance says 25, I'm charging 50. You bounce a check, I'm not paying for it.
Okay.
So that's just the concept here.
So we could change, if you needed, we could change the ordinance.
I would just update that language to, instead of say, "Charge a dollar amount," charge whatever the fee is we get.
Right.
That's it. That's all I'm proposing here.
Perfect. So I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. President.
Okay.
Make a motion that we refer to the Budget Committee's fund balance policy for their review, refer to the Budget Committee's proposed investment policy for the Budget Committee review, refer the language for purchasing to the Budget Committee for their review. And number four, I'm still not sure on the verbiage, ordinance, ordinance language for finances?
It's really. Yeah, I guess I would call it standardized fees. Ordinance language against standardized fees.
Okay. Ordinance language for standardized fees. That would be my, the Budget Committee for their review.
Okay. Can I squeeze the last two?
I thought that was the.
I think five and six, OPEB trust policy.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm 5% of the time. We're closing. I'd like to make a motion, continue the town council meeting for another 15 minutes to 10:15.
Chair seconds.
Let's go to 10:30, Madam, please. I need PBIC time.
Oh, absolutely. Okay.
So OPEB is this?
Your vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your motion, I'll second at 10:30.
A motion by counsel, Madam NATO, to extend to 10:30. Second by counsel, Zawinski.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Please, Sully. Yes.
After you vote, I just want to make a comment. If you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, Roko, please.
Ms. Alves? Yes, Mrs. NATO?
Yes.
Mr. Sully? Mr. Zalansky?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President.
So how about we just roll in five and six?
As soon as I'm done with that, I'll table anything else I got if you need me to.
Do you want to read through that then? Or we through this?
It'll be real quick, Dave. All right, OPEB, we set aside money in our budget to fund post-employment benefits. We have not set up a trust yet. So the trust, Interlokal Risk Management Trust, has a trust that they want to come present to see if we'd be amenable to go in with their trust program of this. My question is, would you be amenable to hear that presentation? I believe we should be starting a trust to put the contributions from our budget into a trust. Ultimately, what it does is it takes away operational funding of healthcare for retirees and makes the plan itself pay for it. So if we fund this over the next 10 years, it might come $400,000 out of our operating budget, because now that $400,000 will be paid out of the OPEB plan. So that's kind of my question, is if I schedule the trust to commit to do a presentation, it's amenable?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. And then the last one's capital budget. I'm really not involved at all, but if you don't know how you're gonna pay for it, it's really hard to do a capital budget. I think that needs to be a discussion of, I guess, a more open discussion of, how are we gonna do this in the future? I mean, because if I'm not involved at all, then really, the component of understanding who's gonna pay for it is not there. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to create a plan without a funding source to it. So that's it.
I believe you corrected, that you should work in the hand with the Budget Committee coming up with the fiscal plan for the town for future needs.
Okay, Mr. President.
Yes.
So now would be the time for me to make the motion on the first four points. This time, right?
Thank you.
Do we vote?
You went to the first four and then five and six.
Yeah, five and six is what you're just gonna have.
You made the motion.
Yeah, to send it to the Budget Committee.
Right.
So that's my motion.
There's no second.
Second.
Motion by counsel Zawinski, second by counsel, Madam NATO. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, Roko, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mrs. NATO?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Zalansky?
Yes.
Now we have policies five and six.
I was just gonna ask.
I'm gonna set up.
You can set it up.
Monday, it's Mondays.
Mr. President, I think I'm moving to move up new business, L10, new business A, especially by council, or donations for town Easter egg hunt. I see Mr. Dyson, Chief, Fox, correct committees.
Chief's gonna move, remember? Who represents this?
10A.
Water system. 10A, okay. Motion by counsel, Zawinski. Yeah, counsel Sully, second by the chair, to move it up. Any further questions? Hearing Madam Clerk, Roko, please.
Ms. Alves? Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO? Mr. Sully? Mr. Zalansky?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, go ahead, counsel Sully.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna speak with Mr. Dyson. I'm gonna move this thing along here quick. In years past, the children's Easter egg hunt that we put on annually, the Kiwanis Club has always been very generous in giving $500 or more. What's happened is they don't fundraise anymore, so they don't make out the donations. So we've had kind of a shortfall this past year for donations for the Easter egg hunt. So years ago, we used to have, I believe it was like $1,500 or $2,000 in the line item for things like this, and that was taken out. So I'm here tonight asking for a $1,000 donation so that in two weeks, I can have the Easter egg hunt for the children.
Mr. Pendergast, is $1,000 and up?
Yes.
With $1,200? If you buy more eggs with $1,200.
I'm actually buying more than I always get, but we're going to a different vendor. But we have $400 and.
$474 carryover of unspent prior.
From last year, so.
So you have $470.
So I'm all set, so. The $1,000.
We gotta continue.
You don't even have to. The $2,500 for council donations, none of that's been near market yet, so you can take it out of donation rather than continue.
I'd like to make, counsel Sully, you moved it up, sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to take the $1,000 out of the council's donations for the Easter egg hunt.
Second? Second by counsel Sully, second by counsel, Madam.
Yeah, everybody's second.
Zawinski, counsel, Madam NATO, the chair.
All right, let's go.
Please, will you give a vote?
Mr. President, are you?
Madam Clerk, Roko, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sully? Mr. Zalansky?
Yes.
Can I just say thank you? The kids really enjoyed it.
Can we say thank you?
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Can we move, Chief? Mr. President?
Listen, I just take this.
I'm sorry.
This was very exciting.
We have Josh Schatner, who's the consultant for the town, is here for the executive session. I don't know if you're aware, maybe, just keep that in mind.
Well, yeah, I do, but I also wanna get the chief, if I may make a motion, Mr. President, move up. Two minutes, please. This is, I know, that's.
Second.
Motion by counsel, counsel, Zawinski, second by counsel, Madam NATO. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Chief?
Sorry, it took so long, chief.
Mr. President, counselors, I believe you're aware of this email that I sent to the TA, and it simply deals with water systems in town. A large corporation that did some major upgrades that will remain anonymous, by, they're able to supersede not only state, but federal codes. They ended up making a moral decision to fund the cost as long as it wasn't placed on or near its property. So the town quarters have held $60,000 on a check that was made out to Nell Smithfield Fire for a couple of years now before we can finally come to the appropriate area to put that system in. It turns out to be on town land. That's simple in itself. We don't have any easement needs. It's flat eight, lot number 275, on the corner of Brentwood Drive and with Socket Hill. It's just at the base of the fire tower. It's a non-hydranted area, so we're, we're really in need of some water in that area, so it's, to me, it's a win-win. We've got the funding source already, it's on town land, it's a simple procedure of getting someone to purchase the tank and install it. So whatever assistance is necessary, we'll gladly lend a hand to either the TA or to Mr. Pomley or Public Works, which I'm sure might be involved with it.
Would this be, would this system be under the purview of your department?
Well, it isn't, it isn't, no. I would say, no, it's not. Because as you may or may not recall, you have an ordinance on the books that governs the town's responsibilities subsequent to an installation and an inspection of all water systems. When a developer turns the road, the development, and turns the system over to the town, should the tank leak 10 years from now, the town owns that responsibility. So it's really a town feature that we make use of. So I don't know what I'm asking for. I'm not even sure it belongs in front of you.
Well, because it's on town land.
On town land, yes.
Yeah, I suspect, I mean, it belongs, if anywhere, here. So, you know, what I'm, what we're looking for is you to authorize it, the town administrator to proceed with the process.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. President.
Counselor Zawinski?
Chief, fiberglass line, concrete, like, the standards, right?
You understand it?
Yeah.
We have a very good audience that governs that particular piece.
All right. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that, that we approve the installation of a 10,000 gallon water system to be located on town land, flat number eight, lot number 275.
Chair seconds. Chair seconds. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, Roko, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sully? Mr. Zalansky?
Yes.
Yes. Before we take care of the gentleman, I just got one request.
I need to do PBIC.
Go to PBIC.
All right.
I'll speak really fast.
Okay.
I promise. Okay. So for the roads, we are on time, on budget, everything is wonderful. We're not releasing the roads yet until the contractor, our bid comes back. For municipal buildings, design development is 100% complete. I sent the finalized, well, the finished plans out to the owners of each space, and I gave them a deadline before March 14th to come back to me with any changes that they need. So far, only Peter Benconia of EMA has had any feedback. The school has actually given me some feedback on this building, which I am absolutely not happy about. And we need vendors for FFNE, that's furniture, fixtures and equipment, IT and security. IT and security. Jason has helped us out with IT.
That should be all set. I talked with them today, they're going to collaborate with the school guys.
Awesome.
So it should be a one entity team doing this building for IT instead of.
That's exactly how it should be. Did, did you see the email from Mr. Lindberg this morning?
No, I did not. No, I did not.
Because my reply was not very nice, but I didn't put him on it. But our vendors and security, now, our vendors for furniture, fixtures and equipment, for most of that, Bushy School has a very, very small budget, and that worries me because of the amount of security that has to go into that building. It needs to be upgraded, so that concerns me, but we are keeping the budget in mind. Bushy, right now, is a little bit over, we're looking at ways to save, and KD, we are a little under optimistically, so maybe we can take from one and give to the other, but we're doing pretty well. March fourteenth, I haven't found a place yet, but I invite all of you to attend our meeting, and we'll be going over and finalizing and approving the designs of what this building will look like.
Better than this.
It's amazing, amazing. I'm so very, very proud of the PBIC and all the work that we've done, and everything that Jason has done for us has been absolutely phenomenal and such a great help. Now, to get to the point where I need you guys, I need help with getting the vendors and the owners of each of the spaces to actually help contact us and work with our architect. I'm not getting anywhere other than with Jason.
What do you, what do you, I'm sorry to ask the question, but what do you mean, like, assessing isn't replying to you, or?
Nobody is, other than.
Okay.
EMA gave me his vendors, and I sent that off to Jason, I mean, to Eric Army of Studio Masia, but he didn't know what vendors to use, and then came up with a list and sent it. That is not what this was supposed to be. We held back on our vendors in the contract with Studio Masia, because what we told Studio Masia was, we were going to use vendors that we always use.
Correct.
And that we're comfortable with, and those are systems and everything, and you have done that one hundred percent. But the answer that I got back from the schools in for this building this morning from Mr. Lindberg is, I want the contract for Studio Masia. He's not getting the contract that we have with Studio Masia.
See, I haven't seen that, so if you're getting pushback from the non-town side, I can't speak to it, but if it's somebody on the town side, let me know.
That's why I need the town council to help, because.
Tell me specifically who you want me to ask.
Well, we have IT, you have that handle, IT.
That's covered, yeah.
School committee.
Okay, so.
Okay, well.
Chair person, here.
Right, so.
So what do you need from us?
I need Mr. President to write a strongly written letter to Chairwoman NATO to help, to direct Superintendent Lindberg or someone of his charge to actually help us with the furniture and vendors to be used for this building. There, the design aspect of it, the construction design, is held up right now. We could be in construction design right now if we had all of the answers of what furniture is going to be used, if any new furniture is going to be purchased for any space, what furniture we have, as in like an asset management type of database to give to Studio Masia. I mean, are we going to use these ugly chairs, since it's the placement? He needs to know all of that, so he can do the construction documents. If we don't have all of that information, our vendors giving requirements, which are of the owners of the space, so town administrator and Superintendent Lindberg are the owners of the space of Kendalline in the.
That's not necessarily so.
Well, it is, because they're offices. They're the users of this space, so they're the ones who answer for it.
Because the, because the, what do you call it, the title says it's a town building.
No, that doesn't matter. It's the school space and the town space.
She, she means the end user.
It has nothing to do with the, the buildings.
Like, the finance office is me, because I'm the finance person.
Right, so Jason.
The end users.
Mr. Palmly gets to tell Studio Masia, my desk goes here, I get two chairs here, and if he doesn't have two chairs right now, we have a budget to buy him those two chairs. We have all of that. I'm not getting anywhere with school officials.
I'll do so, I'll, I'll work with you and Jason to, to craft a letter to get, you know, to move the project, the project forward.
If we do not have it, and I've already written a very strongly worded letter, that if we don't have it by April first, we lose. Eric, Studio Masia will have to go back into construction design, and that is going to cost us a lot of money. April first is the absolute drop dead deadline. Our vendors need to go to Studio Masia with the users' requirements and the furniture, equipment, everything that's going to be used, including security.
All right, I'll work, I'll work with you, get together sometime and squeeze, we can do it.
Sounds good.
To Jason's, craft this letter, so we can get the moves of project forward on behalf of the community.
Awesome.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to?
That's it, I'm done.
If you have a chance, we can do the appointment to the board of canvassers.
Do you need a vote? Okay, is that Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Bennett, that's the chairman.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Bennett to the board of canvassers.
No second.
Wait, we got to move, we got to move. Wait, let's do it, right? Let's move it up on the agenda. Okay, that's item, what is it?
J two.
J two.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move J two appointment by town council board of canvassers, one sixty, a term that expires March first, two thousand twenty-two, upon the agenda.
Chair seconds. The one, councilwoman Zawinski. Hearing the, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to point, nominate Mr. Bennett for the position of board of canvassers. Chair second, second by the chair, councilman Soli, for Mr. Bennett. Any further discussion? Hearing that, Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Alz, yes, this is NATO, Mr. Soli, Mr. Zalanski, Mr. Boucher.
Yes.
Thank you.
No, thank you. For what you know, really, okay, I'll do this. I just got, I just got, I just got two quick things that need to be done. One is that the, to get the funding for the item K in the docket, under, old business like to bring it up to the forefront, if I may, gives you a discussion with council water action on Perry Corporation, funding for science, funding for science and road green needs. Basically, it's being held up because we have appropriate the money, so. For the engineering report, right? Yes, for the engineering report. How much is that, Mr. President? Four thousand, thousand three hundred.
Four thousand, maybe a change.